Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of February 8th. This is our fourth in a series of four public forums. This forum tonight is on our FY24 budget. I'd like to welcome everyone who is here with us in person and those who are here with us joining online. I'd like to thank Milton Access TV for hosting this hybrid meeting, which is a challenge, and we very much appreciate their help in making this happen, and the Council on Aging for allowing us to use this space. As I mentioned, this is the fourth in our series of four public forums, and the school committee decided last summer that we wanted to hold these public forums this year as an opportunity for more community dialogue about the efforts and activities around the schools, and particularly focus on the pillars of our strategic plan and our budget. So this is the fourth of our forums, and we have opportunities for people who are here in the room with us to come up to the microphone to speak. For those of you who are joining online, you can raise your hand with the raise hand function if you'd like to speak, and we'll recognize you and promote you to speak. So I'd like to introduce our presenters for this evening. We are a mix of, a real hybrid mix of presenters. And tonight, in person, we have Dr. Glenn Pavlicek, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Online, we have Interim Superintendent Garth McKinney, who is joining us. We have school committee members over at that table, Dr. Selena Miranda, Anna Varghese, Betty White, Beverly Ross Denny, and myself, Ada Rosemarin. And Dr. Lizzie Carroll is joining us online. We also have three Milton Public Schools staff who are joining us online will be part of our presentation. Karen McDavid, the Principal of Glover School, Susan Miselli, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and Claire Galloway Jones, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And finally, we have the wonderful Stephanie O'Keefe, our Communications Coordinator, who will be helping with facilitation for this evening's meeting. Our presentation will take approximately 30 minutes, and then we'll allow an additional hour for questions and dialogue. So our forum will conclude promptly by 8:30 PM, at which time we want everyone to get back home safely. And if there are more questions that come up that you think of after tonight or that we don't get to tonight, please know that you can always email us or call us and let us know what's on your mind. Ask people to please keep their comments to a maximum of three minutes to allow as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak this evening, and ask everyone to maintain a respectful community discourse. Before we get started, I'm just wondering if people in the room can indicate to us if they, if there are people who plan to speak tonight? If you could raise your hand just to get a sense of how many speakers. Okay, terrific. Thank you. And online, we have a number. I don't know if, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, that would be great if online, if you, if you plan to speak or if you decide to speak later on, you're welcome to raise your hand. So with that, I will pass this over to Dr. Miranda, who is our Chair of Strategic Planning, to provide some introductory remarks and slides. So, Dr. Miranda?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Rosemarin. I'm Selena Miranda, and I am a member of the school committee. In front of you or on the presentation, you'll see our overall vision statement, which captures just our ideal, you know, sort of ideal of where we want to be, of what we want our school district and our students to achieve. I'm not going to go ahead and read that paragraph for you, but I will tell you that you can actually find our strategic plan online, and you can review the vision statement. However, I would like us to move to the next slide, which is our strategic goal. And we went over this at the last forum, but for those of you who haven't perhaps heard it before or are not familiar with our strategic plan, our overall goal is to provide all students with a highly personalized, developmentally appropriate, emotionally safe, and equitable-balanced daily learning experiences, designed to ensure that each student becomes a productive, caring, and contributing member of society, and can achieve his, her, their post-secondary goals as measured by the analysis of information obtained via the district data cycle. So that is our overall strategic goal that is framing our work from now until 2027. So it's a five-year strategic plan. We're in the first year of implementation. Unfortunately, I don't have enough time to go over how we came to the strategic plan that we have before us, but it was an elaborate process. Up until last year, the spring of last year, we were completing an old strategic plan, and then we needed to create a new vision, a new North Star of where we want to be as a district. And that is a result of many conversations that happened across the district with administration, with staff, with teachers, with parents being involved in committees, et cetera. So there's a lot of work that happened in how we got here. We can definitely go into greater detail, and I would look to Chair Rosemarin to share more about that because she was actually part of that process. Next, please. And as we have discussed before, there are three pillars to the strategic plan, and that is personalized learning, safe and supportive schools, and equity in learning. I would also encourage folks to review our conversations, the different recordings of the forums if you weren't able to attend, because we actually went into great detail on each of these pillars to let you know sort of where we are. But I remind you that we're in year one. Actually, it's the first, you know, what, six months of implementation of this plan, so just to think about it that way. But in terms of personalized learning, what we're talking about is that we're making sure that educators have the tools that they need to meet our students, you know, specific strengths, interests, and needs of each student to create a unique learning experience for all of our students. So that's the focus of that pillar. The second pillar, which is safe and supportive schools, we're talking about actively working together, and mostly, actually, we've heard a lot from the school unit. So what does this look like in the schools to make sure that we're fostering a safe, positive, and healthy and inclusive whole-school learning environment, so that we can support all of our students holistically in key areas of development, and integrate services and align the many student support initiatives that aim to address particular areas of need in our schools? And thirdly, our equity in learning focuses on working to create the conditions in which all of our learners can, of all identities and abilities, have the resources and support they need to thrive. Obviously, there's greater detail here, and again, I refer you to the plan if you're interested in learning more. Can we go to the next slide, please? And so there's embedded in our plan is a theory of action, and that is that if we make progress against the three key strategic initiatives, that we are going to see student and staff experiences improving. We are going to see student performance, which I know we all care about, improving overall, sort of individual student performance. But I would also point to the fact that we're working towards improving on the aggregate how our district performs, right? In terms of when we're looking at state data, we want to make sure that we see progress in the direction that we all care about. And then lastly, making sure that our students are prepared for the future, right? So that if we're doing all of this, that's the idea. That's where we're going to get to. And now the next slide. Here is a list of the many things that have happened already. And again, I don't need to read all of them, but you see that most of it is really focusing on implementing, sort of, we have new math and social studies curriculum that's embedded in differentiation. And when we talk about differentiation, this is what we're meaning in terms of personalized learning, right? We're analyzing data. So we're looking at the data. The data is driving sort of the work that we're doing. We're also planning instruction together, so, and then selected digital platform, we selected a digital platform as a repository to collect student work. So again, we want to make sure we're using data. So that is happening on the personalized learning, on the safe and supportive schools. You also have, we're regularly assessing students' social-emotional well-being. We want to know how our students do it, how can we better meet their needs. We created a school-based social-emotional learning goals, and we have actually secured resources to continue to move that work forward. In our equity in learning, which we just heard about two weeks ago, we have been able to, we completed a root cost analysis of the district's disproportionality in special education and developed a robust action plan. We've also been able to secure additional resources to continue to move the work forward, and we recently secured a grant from DESI to be able to recruit a diverse teaching workforce. So that's where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miranda. And Dr. Pavlicek, pass it over to you.
Thank you. So one of the issues this year is, in the past year, in the past two years, there's been a substantial amount of federal funding, whether it's ESER funding from the state or ARPA funding through the federal government, or some ARPA funding through, that went through the Norfolk County. But there have been different sources of funding that have supported us in different ways. This year, fiscal '24, we've referred to it as sort of the ARPA cliff. There is a large amount of ARPA funding that is actually dropping off after the current fiscal year we're in, going into next year. And the positions, and we'll talk about what those positions are in a moment or two, but in order to maintain the positions we have currently, we need to go from between the general fund and the ARPA funding, about $59.6 million worth of budget resources, to about $61.6, or about $2 million additional money to maintain what it is we do now. The problem with that is, ARPA is going down by $1 million. So in order to get $2 million on the budget, you need $3 million from the general fund because we're losing $1 million worth of ARPA. If you look at it as a whole, the cost of roughly $2 million is about a 3.3% increase to support this year's budget into next year. 3.3% in this economy and with the state of us at the moment is not an exorbitant amount. In fact, it's less than it's been in many years. But if you're only looking at the general fund, which is what town meeting is going to be looking at, it looks more like a 5% because that's the increase to general fund spending, funding that comes from the tax base and state aid and other sources. So that's sort of an overall picture of, this is the cost of doing what we do right Again, this year's appropriations, $58 million, to level service the general fund budget, which is basically take the exact staff we have, and that's what our budget did, by the way. We took a snapshot on, I think it was November 5th, and took the exact staff and rolled it forward, and then looked at all the non-personnel costs and made, tried to make assumptions as best we can with current inflation and so forth. Some of that's difficult, as we'll come to a little later. Utilities, for instance, are very hard to project right now. But to basically level service our general fund appropriation is about $2 million, but then there's that extra $1 million of ARPA funding that we have to make up. And again, that $978,000 in ARPA funding is the actual cost next year of retaining the people that we have this year on ARPA. So it's not an allocation from the federal government that's, some of it's for this and some of it's for that. It's just strictly the staff we have this year that are funded by ARPA carried into next year. These are the ARPA staff. These are the staff that are funded by ARPA currently. The preschool coordinator, you may have heard, our preschool program is growing wildly in terms of children with special needs. We have to, we'll talk more about that shortly. 504 Team Chair is a person who coordinates all the work with students who are not in special needs but are covered under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we have a lot of students who need accommodations under that. And this person is here to make sure that we follow all the right guidelines and so forth. An elementary reading specialist, a high school math support teacher. We moved the kindergarten aides from .8 to full-time using ARPA funds. That's something we've wanted to do for a long time. They once were full-time. They got cut back to part-time in budget cuts years ago. If you think about it, when, you know, if you have an aide in the kindergarten classroom, when are they most needed? The beginning of the day and the end of the day, when you're getting kids in boots off and boots on and so forth? And basically, if they're only a .8 FTE, they're there one or the other, but not both, which is, doesn't make sense. We really needed those people full-time. Two part-time nurses, it goes without saying that our nursing staff is stretched as a result of the last few years. Two preschool teachers, and the three special education aides were actually included last year in ARPA funding by my predecessor, who was, I guess, also my successor, but that's a different story. Because those were, they needed to be filled, those are special ed mandates, that was said at the time, those were going to have to be rolled over because there was no way to lose those positions. And the board-certified behavior analysts, PCBAs, dealing with children with all sorts of needs. It is hard to say out loud that you can pick things out of here that we don't need. This one you can look at online. The long and the short of it is, based on last year, we looked at about a dozen different communities, or actually 18, I think it is, different communities in terms of per pupil spending. The state average for per pupil spending is $19,000 per student. These, of these ones here, Brookline is 25, Wellesley's 24, Lexson's 21, down the list to Milton, which is at 16.8. So we're under the state average. We're, you know, about $2,200 per student under in state, in per pupil spending. Per pupil spending is computed by DESI. They take the end-of-year report, which is our spending, anything we get from grants, health insurance that's paid by the town, debt service that's paid by the town, anything that has to do with schools is aggregated into one amount and then divided by the number of FTE students. So inasmuch as the state is capable of doing anything apples-to-apples, this is as close as probably we're going to come to apples-to-apples comparison.
Glenn, just to reiterate, the $16,000 figure includes health insurance.
Yes, includes health insurance for staff and so forth.
And benefits?
Yes.
And one other question?
Anything that, anything that comes out of, you know, the cost of retirement fund, retired teachers' health insurance that gets charged on cherry sheets, anything that is contributed into the system is built into this. It's, they're called the end-of-year reports. You can see them on the DESI website. They're 95 pages of lovely spreadsheets, per school.
The sheet, we're 297 out of 397.
Right, out of, out of the 397 districts in Massachusetts, our per pupil spending is 297th out of 397.
Thank you.
How do we spend our money? 45%, the large one here, on instruction, that is regular education instruction. 28%, the large blue on the left, is special education instruction. So that's 73% right there. Instructional services are things like aides, guidance counselors, professional development, all those different pieces of instructional services. Policy and administration up at the, up at the top is 3%. Facilities, 7%. Technology is a weird one from the state's audit system. It shows 1%, but the state has a strange way of dealing with technology. A student computer is an instruction. A faculty computer is an instructional, sorry, instructional leadership. So the little 1% in there is sort of network capacity and things like that, things that are across the state. So it's, it's an odd way of doing it, but I don't, I fill out the forms, I don't argue with the state on that. But in any case, the point of this is the vast majority of our budget is going to instruction. So that's the cost of doing nothing, basically. That's the cost of maintaining where we are. We've met with various different departments. They've given us lists and lists of things that they need. We've whittled them down. You know, it's, it's already a large ask, but it's important that we say out loud the things that are really necessary. And so we, we are looking at, you know, we've tried to whittle down to, you know, basic minimum, what is really necessary going forward? What do we need? And these are just the needs beyond that level service. I'm going to ask the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Susan Miselli, to talk about the next couple of slides, just for a couple of words on special education.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Right here, you can see just a snapshot of our special education students that we're currently supporting in the district. You can see at the end-of-year reports from the 21, 2021 year and 21 to 22 year, you can see the increases in supporting students across different disability categories. Most noteworthy is to take a look at our increases in students we're supporting with autism. Families are moving to Milton and benefiting from the robust programs we provide, the New England Center Partnership. Currently, that number for this year is going to continue to grow. It's right now between 125 and 130. We have a few students in evaluation. As you look down the list, you can see our trends. We do have a decrease in our communication category, and you'll see that continue. That is a direct response to addressing our disproportionality in special education related to the over-identification of students in this subgroup. You'll continue to see growth in our developmental delay category, speaking to our needs of our youngest students. We're qualifying more students for special education in their early years, COVID-related, developmental delay rated. That number is hovering in the 120 range right now and climbing. As you look down, you'll notice in this year's numbers, our neurodiverse population is growing. We're currently looking at numbers in the low 70s now. That's an area where we've continued to develop programming and supports. And the other category really to take a look at is our specific learning disability group. Those are kids that have explicit disabilities in the areas of learning, reading, writing, and math, and that number is going to be going up a little bit this year as well. It's right now, it's hovering around 215. Here you see our two charts related to the work that the department has been focusing on related to our disproportionality work. We are, again, trying to address the communication subgroup and our discipline subgroup. While this graph is very small, the important information to take away here is the blue band across the top. The Department of Education requires that we have a risk ratio of less than three, which means that our students in certain subgroups should not be more than three times more likely to be either communication or disciplined out due to their race. So these are things that align with our pillar for equity and inclusion, and we really are working very thoughtfully on how we support kids to keep them in class and in school. The reason you see that the risk ratio is pending from the last column is the Department of Ed did not calculate that number last year, but in my conversations with them and in looking at our data, that's still an area where we are at great risk, and we are going to be continuing to monitor that. Finally, this gives you a sense of our distribution of students that we're supporting across the district. I can tell you that our number will be showing a little higher this year as well. We are seeing increased enrollment at the preschool level. We are seeing increased enrollment in our students who require supports outside of the district. This out-of-district number is also impacted by our space limitations in the district. We've talked a lot about the number of classroom spaces that we need and how we support all students. As our students grow through the programs, go from preschool into elementary into middle into high, we'll continue to need additional space to make sure that everyone gets the program that they need. Right now, our special ed number is approaching the 900 mark. That said, we have over 100 students in evaluation right now across the district. So that number does tend to move day to day. When we, when the Office of Pupil Personnel does our annual report, we'll be able to give detailed numbers with all of this data for year-to-date. Thank you.
So in terms of needs here, because of the growth in special education, we have some current needs that absolutely we have to deal with. We need an additional speech therapist, and we need halftime OT and PT services. These are required by IEPs as the classes grow. I mean, it may be, right now, we're covering these services with contracted services, which is more expensive and not the way to do it. You want to have your own staff doing these things. So we are going to have to hire speech therapists and halftime OT and PT services, one way or another. Those are going to have to be done. It is more effective to hire them than to contract them out. Going back to Susan's comments about the autism spectrum in the preschool, we are going to need an additional class at the Colicott next fall for students on the autism spectrum. They are, those classes are capped at small numbers, they're capped at even smaller numbers because they're squeezed into classrooms that aren't full-size classrooms. If they were in a full-size classroom, you could have probably 12 or 13 students in the classroom, but in these classrooms they're in, which are sort of converted offices, conference rooms, and so forth, because we're out, we're out of space, you have a maximum of nine. The classes we have now are full. We have to open another class, and that is a space issue just by itself. If we can't, we're trying to find, figure the space to put it in, frankly, because if you've been in Cunningham and Colicott where these are housed, space is at more than a premium, especially given this last weekend where we had a pipe burst. So it's even, even more so. So this is a class we have to, we have to fill, we have to form. If we don't form it, we'll be sending these students out of district, which is not good for them, more expensive for us. It's, again, we have to do this. We're going to, one way or the other, we have to do this class. The additional teacher at Milton High School, as some of these students move up, our first group of students that we admitted years ago on the autism spectrum are now reaching Milton High School. We need people who are trained to deal with students on the autism spectrum, more than a general ed special educator. These are very specific trainings, and we have to have someone at the high school who is capable of dealing with that. So again, we have to do these. We don't do these, the students will be going out of district, we'll be paying for them one way or another. So these two slides, in the world of special education, aren't so much need-to-haves as must-haves. One way or the other, we're going to do these. It might have to be at the expense of something else if it's not funded, but we have to do these things. They're just legal mandates. Other things that we would like to do in special education, we'd like to have a classroom at Tucker School for younger students who are academically challenged, to try to support them before they enter the realm of special education, and try to correct a lot of learning deficiencies that have happened to them at this point. That's something been on our, been on our plate for a while, but it's, you know, something we would, we would really think is a priority should we get funding for. And the out-of-district coordinator, again, there were 50 some students out of district. We have to have someone who goes around to all those sites, visits them, meets with the teachers, does the IEPs, so forth. Right now, it's a .6 position. We have two part-time people who do it, .3 each. It, due to caseload, that is likely going to have to move up to a full-time position. You want to?
Want to pass this on to Claire Galloway Jones? Claire?
Good evening, everyone. On this slide, what you'll see is our quality review and equity audit findings. Some of you may remember, we had our equity forum a couple of weeks ago. We reviewed many slides, but this slide in particular, if you look at the left-hand column, you'll see what, these are the areas that were highlighted of concern around disproportionality, curriculum and instruction, and accountability. And on the right side, you'll see the recommendations that the firm had for the district specifically around disrupting disproportionality, what we needed to do around professional development, and our data and equity goals. So Sue did a great job talking about our disproportionality and the work that's been happening in the district. You notice on the left-hand side, we were disproportionate, specifically with disabilities of African-American students. This was also mentioned by Sue in regards to the communication. This is something that they've worked really hard at, and those numbers are coming down that, that was shown on the slide that she reviewed. Also, we were disproportionate in discipline, and part of the work that has been done prior to my arrival with Sue was to hire Adina Schecter, our restorative practice coach. And that's also, we've seen a huge, 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 huge reduction in our discipline because of having that. of having that person onboard. So, that was something we were able to immediately do in regards to the findings. The curriculum instruction, they all refer to the cultural relevance, have been updated in some content areas. We also noted that some of our students were still not taking advantage of our advanced placement classes. The biggest hurdle I think we have is around professional development, which is recommended here. They talk about developing a comprehensive PD plan, making sure that we have embedded PD for our curriculum leaders, our building leaders, and our teachers throughout the district, and continue to revise our curriculum with an equity lens. This is really the area that we've been trying to focus on this year, but again, capacity has been a huge issue for us. You know, the Equity Office is the office of one. Myself and Adina have been trying to do this work, but this is really the area that we struggle with the most. We have a very comprehensive plan. We have a strong roadmap now, but again, to meet some of the needs and the recommendations that were outlined, we will need to build capacity. In regards to accountability, what was noted was that we were had lacking in accountability in some areas, specifically in our monitoring, and this is something that in our data analysis and goals, really making sure that, recommendation was that student data inform all of our decisions. So, we spent a lot of time this year looking at data, really making sure that our data's is aligning with our strategic plan. So, this is the two areas that I think we're trying to focus on the most, and again, building that capacity is really going to help us meet our targets and recommendations.
So, in terms of building the capacity, what we were looking at was to have basically one more person in this office, an equity coach, and some stipends for one, one person in each school to act as sort of the liaison to the schools to try to build some capacity here. Originally, this was a much larger ask, but it's been cut down to sort of bare bones because there are, again, only so many things we can look at in a budget. So...
Next slide, we've got Karen McDavid, who's going to share some data about test results over time.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and I'm certainly not the best person on this call to speak to this. Our math director, Brian Seelig, is here as well, so I, I don't, I don't want to steal any of his thunder because he is the expert on all of this, but, you know, in my years here, and I've been here a while, this is the first year that we've been able to benefit from math interventionists at the elementary level. And I can tell you that without our Mr. Baldwin, I don't know what we would do. He is servicing and working with children in ways that we've never had the ability to do, because we just simply didn't have the staff in the interventionist capacity. So, when you look at our data, and yeah, there's a green circle around all those drops, right? All those negatives in every grade level, but I encourage you to look, you know, a little more carefully at the data, and look at the 2019 and the drop to 2021. In every single grade level, we dropped, and in some grade levels, we dropped significantly. But we know what happened in 2020, right? And we know what happened in 2021. So, what I also encourage folks to do is to look at the 21 to 22, because you'll see that we made gains. We are gaining back in every grade level. So, while the picture, if you look only at that green circle, looks dismal, it's not, but we need more. We need more help, we need more support, we need more intervention. We are making the gains, and that's thanks to, you know, the Herculean efforts of our educators. They work so hard every single day, and we are making up for what was lost and what is unfinished, but we still have a ways to go. So, on the next slide is, I believe, the pitch for the need for an additional math interventionist, and Glenn can speak to that more, but before I turn it back over to Glenn, Brian, since you're the expert on all this, any, anything to add there?
Thanks, Karen. You did a great job. I mean, I think that it is a situation where we are taking intentional steps to address the impact of the pandemic on math, which all of the data and research that we have available to us nationally and locally indicates was most adversely affected for student learning during that period of time. And I know that that's something I've spoken about often in my appearances at previous meetings. But I do want to reiterate what Karen said about the math interventionist that supports our Glover students, Mr. Baldwin. He's also putting forward the same efforts for students at Tucker, and we have a second math interventionist who has been doing just as Herculean an effort and impressive a job of supporting our students of need at Collicott and Cunningham since the beginning of the school year. But their caseloads are oversubscribed. There are students that we need to turn away from receiving the intervention, and, and we're currently only able to prioritize students whose data indicates that they have gaps that go back at least one grade level. So, a lot of the instruction done by our interventionists relates to skills and concepts from a previous grade, and the ideal would be to expand from a second, from two to a third interventionist at the elementary level, so that we can be sure that we're able to service students who need some on-grade level reinforcement of content. And I hope I didn't take too much of that thunder, either from Karen or from Glenn, as it relates to this ask.
That's fine. People are allowed to talk about numbers other than me.
Thank you.
We do need a third math interventionist. The two we have are grant-funded. The grant funding does continue for next year, so they will still be here next year. It does drop off after that, so we'll be talking about that again, but we do need a third person, and this way, we would at least have one permanently on our budget that we can carry forward, because we have, for years, wanted to have some math intervention abilities. In terms of other levels at the middle school, one of the things we're looking at here is, if you look at sections of 25 or over at the middle school, notice in 2020, 2021, it's fairly low. That's because we had an additional four staff members during that year for, when we were doing hybrid learning, we brought more people on that year. But you're looking at fairly large numbers of classes, mainly in the exploratory classes, that are 25 students or old or above. They vary a bit because, if you're familiar with the middle school, some classes are sort of every other day, what we sometimes call semester classes. Some are every other day for half a year, so they're sort of like quarter classes. Well, if you teach one of those every day for, every other day for half a year, and you've got 25 students in each class, that's four sections, as opposed to some other classes, which is two sections. So, the numbers are a little variable from year to year, depending on which courses get oversubscribed. In any case, there are a lot of larger classes, primarily in the exploratory at the middle school. We'd like to add an exploratory teacher. The technology is the, one of the ones that, of course, most people want to get into. The difference between exploratory at the middle school and electives at the high school, electives, as they say, you know, as it sounds like, you say, "I'd like to take art, I'd like to take music, I'd like to take this." At the middle school, it's more like, "We want to expose you to this, we want to expose you to that, we want to expose you to the other." It's more of, "What do we have room for?" rather than, "What do you want?" So, they are slightly different, but in any case, we need, we have demand at the middle school for, the two most pressing demands at the middle school are an extra exploratory teacher, specifically in technology, and an English language support teacher in the sixth grade, again, to correct students who are coming up, who need extra ELA support. We have, we have extra math support in the sixth grade. We don't have extra ELA support in the sixth grade. And at the high school, we, Principal Cahill came in with a list, most, some of the list is at the bottom, but what we took as the most pressing need at the high school is one of the more interesting titles, business career tech. What's happened at the high school? This is the business department, this is economics, but it's also cooking, it's also fashion, it's basically a lot of things that were combined, used to be different departments that were combined together, where we said, "We shouldn't have so many department heads, let's put them all under one person." So, they're all under one person. You have, excuse me, 27 sections of the 50 or over 25 students. That's actually misleading, because this includes, those 50 sections include cooking, woodshop, and auto shop, which are capped under 25 students by OSHA regulations. So, it's more like 27 out of about 40 sections that are over-enrolled in this, in this particular department. So, as far as the high school goes, that was the most significant need. And then, our final, in terms of system-wide technology, we have a Director of Technology and three staff. For 5,000-plus pieces of equipment in six built, in six schools, we had more people in this department when I joined the school committee in 2003 than we have now, and I would dare say, most people realize things have changed a bit in 20 years. So, this has been a pressing need for quite a while to get another person into this department. As I say, if it wasn't for a class at the high school who are, do a fabulous job at repairing Chromebooks and putting screens back on and putting keys back into them, we would be sunk. There's a, there's a group, a group at the high school who just, or have saved us by doing this. Oops, sorry. So, that's us. I mean, in terms of where we are, it's, it's about a $3 million ask. All the other things we're talking about are another million-dollar ask. $4 million is a huge ask, we know. But if you have to look at, you know, we don't do anyone favors by saying, "We don't need anything more." We need to let people know what the, what the, the needs of the district are. These are the needs of the district. This is what we're going forward with, and we will see what happens when we hit budget time at the town. It's still too early, the governor's budget isn't out yet, we don't know what state aid's going to look like, we don't know what a lot of things are going to look like yet. We are meeting with the Select Board's Finance Subcommittee, we're meeting with the town administrator, and we are going forward, and as, as we get closer and closer to town meeting in May, we will know more, and the town will craft a budget, and it will be what it will be. But this is, this is our budget request to put into that mixture. And so, at that point, I'll turn this off so people at home can see us.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Pavlicek. So, at this point, oh, now we can see everyone. Hi. Now, I'd like to open it up, so if there are people either online or in person who would like to speak, Stephanie O'Keefe is going to keep an eye on those who are online, and if we have any hands raised, we can recognize them, or if we have someone in person who would like to speak. I see one hand in person.
So, we're going to be online first?
Yeah. Sounds good.
So, Jill Clark.
Who will promote Jill Clark. Hold on one sec, we've got somebody coming up online, but thank you.
Yep, she should be up.
Hi, Jill, are you there?
I am, good evening.
Great, hi, good evening.
Thanks, my name is Jill Clark, I live at 26 Harold Street. I am a town meeting member in Precinct Four and a member of the oversight council. I have a question for Dr. Pavlicek, when he was talking about the, after you sort of got through the, the basic needs for a level budget and then moved on to some of the requests, there was sort of a euphemistic comment of, you know, the, the school building leaders bring their requests and we whittle them down. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that process looks like, how sort of the requests from, from principals and other school leaders come to be the budget that you've just shared with us?
Sure, it's a, it's a couple-layered process. Initially, the school, the school committee's finance Subcommittee invites principals in to talk to, to talk to them and present what they feel their needs are. Principals are working with their site councils to decide what's necessary for their building. They come in, they meet with the school, the finance Subcommittee of the school committee, present their various requests. So, that took place over a series of meetings in October to early November. At that point, the school committee, with input from the administration, has to look at it and say, "Well, what of these are sort of the most pressing needs? What ones should we be, you know?" Because always, when you ask what people need, you get a very long list. So, you have to, you have to balance reasonable, you know, balance effect, they're all needs with what are the most pressing needs. And so, this, the list you have here is with some input from the school administration as to what we thought were the most pressing needs. It's the school committees, school committee, finance Subcommittee's recommendation to the school committee. So, it's a, it's a process of a few, few layers, from site council to principal to Subcommittee to administration and to the school committee.
Thank you, that's helpful, and I see Principal McDavid chuckling as, as well, you know, because I think, you know, it's reasonable, right? I think the schools do have extraordinary needs, and the principals have a really good sense of what it is that their school communities need, and, and as a, a member of the oversight council, I have only a small insight into that. But I just wanted to raise that question to point out that, as astonishing as that bottom-line number is, I think it's important to remember that it's already a conservative estimate, or there are already things that principals need in their schools that haven't even made it into, to this budget, and everyone is, you know, I know they're all doing their best to kind of tighten their budgets and, and get to where they need to be, but there, there are still unmet needs that, that won't be met even if we, we fund this budget. And so, I, you know, I commend you for getting this far and for making difficult choices that you've made, and know that there's a lot we need to do to fund our schools appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Foster, I live at 1325 Canton Ave. I had a question, sort of a clarifying question on what you said at the end, Glenn, when you said, you know, "Other things come into play sort of after town meeting, like the state funding, we don't necessarily know if it comes into play yet," or something? And I'm just wondering if, so if we're, if this budget comes before town meeting, this is my first year as a town meeting member, so that's why I'm asking, and we approved this budget, and then funding, you know, the state decides to put, to sort of help districts bridge the gap between the ARPA funding that used to be and is not anymore, or are there, is, is there a, does, do we, we don't then have to get more, right? Like, if, if we say, "Yes, we want to take this money from the general fund," but then the state gives us some money, then we don't have to take all that money. Is that correct, or?
Well, what happens is, we, we never know completely the state budget by May town meeting, because we'll know the, the governor's budget, we generally know where the various houses, where the, the House and the Senate are going with it. We generally have a good idea on what state aid is, and we go into town meeting with the best estimate of what state aid is, and that's what puts the budget together, and the warrant committee will approve the articles that, based on that, would give a balanced budget. If there is change afterwards, and there sometimes has been, you know, there have been some times when state aid has come in higher than we expected and so forth, basically, it sits with the town, and at a subsequent town meeting, they could appropriate it if they chose to, or, but it doesn't automatically go anywhere, except, you know, if the, if the state gives it to the town, the town has it. But town meeting gives the authority to spend, doesn't give the authority to collect, the collections come in. So, yeah, so it, there could be, there have been in the past, you know, I can think of times, fall, fall town meetings, where we've allocated more money because the, the budget came in higher. But generally, at May town meeting, we have a decent expectation.
And this year, we did have a, an amount of money that came in after town meeting that we just heard about in the fall, but because the recommendation from the But because the recommendation from the town administrator was to put that money, not to spend it on budgets, but to put it in a reserve because we were anticipating that utility costs is here, were going to be significantly higher for both the schools and the town. So we kind of kept that in, in reserve for those needs.
Hi, I'm Nora Harrington, uh, 10 Standish Road. I have a daughter at Tucker and a son out of district. So Glenn, how many kids do we have in our, in the system, you know, all together in Milton?
4,350 something.
4,000, yeah. And, um, and the state average for spending is about 22,000, did you say, per child?
I'd have to go back and look. I think it was, I think it's less. I think it's 19, 19 and change.
Okay, 19 and change. So we're about, I just was doing some quick math because the numbers are sort of astonishing. So we're about, you know, at least around 3,000 below the state average and we have about 4,000, uh, kids. So, um,
300 below the state average. Oh, no, 3,000, yeah.
3,000 per student below the state average. So you're able to apply that out and that comes to $12 million. So when we, you know, everybody in town is constantly struggling over, why don't we have this? Why don't we have that? Why don't we have more of this? You know, we need more of this at the elementary level. We need more of this. And it's like, of course we do, right? Of course we do. And, um, it just astonishes me really seeing the initiatives and the numbers, what Milton, what the Milton Public Schools and the teachers and the administration managed to do with the budget that we have. I mean, it's fairly astonishing that if we were even at the state average, we would have $12 million more to play with. And unfortunately, we live in a town that has very few, you know, stores and restaurants and very little commercial base. It's all born on the backs of all of us, of the homeowners. And it's, you know, we, we all, it's a, it's a burden, a tax burden. So, um, I guess I just wanted to point out because, you know, I know as the budget goes on and when it gets to town meeting and there'll be all sorts of huzzabah about, you know, well, you spend too much money on this and you spend too much money on that and you spend too much money. And, you know, what I see is we just don't have enough money. You know, we are short $12 million compared to just the average town in Massachusetts. Never mind the really high performing ones. So thank you all for your work and for doing your best to like, you know, get blood from a stone, I suppose.
Thank you.
Colleen had her hand up and then, then the gentleman and then the woman.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm just not going to read anything today, guys.
Colleen McCarthy, town meeting member, precinct four. I live in Gulliver. I have three children, um, in Cunningham. Go Cougars. Just, uh, just more of a clarifying question. So, um, do we feel like we're adding enough intervention? And, and I'm not, I'm not saying this because, and I give you guys a ton of credit. This is incredible amount of work that you've done. You know, we're asking for a third. Do we need a fourth and a fifth? And I listened to warrant, um, meeting and even just reading, right? Early intervention. The intensive learning classroom at Tucker sounds like an incredible, um, program. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like with the three teachers? Is that?
I think Suma Sally would be the best to talk to that.
Sure. So as, as most people know, um, in Milton, each of our buildings houses some of our specialized program. The autism programs at Collicott, our collaborative program and our preschools are at Cunningham. And, um, Principal McDavitt hosts four programs in her building, therapeutic program, the, the neurodiverse language-based, the SLD language-based and our co-taught strand. So Principal Mc, um, Principal Deroche and I have been talking about the needs of the Tucker community and trying to, um, build on our model of equity. We also know that many of the students who are affected by our disproportionality are from the Tucker neighborhood. So the intensive learning model program proposal would allow us to have a co-taught classroom at every level in that school so that students from that community would be able to get intensive, early intervening services in general and special ed and hopefully be able to stay as part of their neighborhood building. It also will continue to provide a more equitable distribution of all of the special ed resources across the district.
Awesome. Thanks, Sue. Um, so is that, is that before children, is that before children reach IEPs? Like before special education, they go on IEPs?
So one of the magical things about classrooms in which you have a general and a special education teacher is that all students benefit on both sides.
Got it.
Generally, students have access to special ed teachers and, and, and special ed teachers, especially if students have access to general ed teachers all day. So the model benefits all of the students in the classrooms.
Yeah. And thanks, Sue. My, um, my son is a peer in one of those classrooms and it's, it's an amazing opportunity for both. I think from, you know, if you're thinking about inclusion, I 100% think it's amazing. So I think with that being said, I just, you know, I think my concern, um, and I think many in the community certainly don't want to speak. But have we even seen the tip of the iceberg in terms of learning loss coming out of COVID? And, you know, it seems like from my perspective, it's almost like, are we asking for enough here? And I listened to Warren, um, and I forgive me, I don't remember the woman's name, but she actually asked a really, I thought, smart question around, are we thinking about this globally? And I know that we're looking at this in the next year. But are we going to be in this position where we're going to the, the taxpayers and saying, hey, guys, we need, you know, four more interventionists because all of a sudden we have this data? So, um, I think that's all I'm getting at. I just, you know, I think my concern is, um, you know, we're going to be doing this year over year. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing, but there's part of me that wonders if we're, we're asking for enough. So thank you for the work that you've done. Um, I just wanted to, to ask a couple of questions. The intensive learning classroom sounds awesome. Um, I know another district, my niece and nephew are in a district that offers that across the district and in every school, they're getting pullouts for the slight slippage of, of reading and math. And it's, it's an amazing program. So maybe one day we can have it in all of our schools. So just a thought. Thank you, guys.
Do you want to see if Brian wants to answer the question on interventionists?
Yeah. Um, Brian, Salig, would you like to?
So that I, I would feel irresponsible to say, no, we definitely could not put to use yet another fourth math interventionist across our elementary schools. But, um, I think in reality, we have to recognize that we're just about six months into having, or six months ago, we had zero math interventionists. So, um, I do think the prudent, responsible thing is to, um, see what impact. And we were already collecting, uh, data, um, on the effect of the intervention services, uh, in our four elementary schools from the first half of the year. But, um, to see how our MCAS data looks compared to last year and the year before, I hope and, and am optimistic that we're seeing, uh, or will see a continued trend in the right direction as far as getting back closer to where our performance levels were, uh, before the pandemic. And I think that it's also important to just acknowledge that, um, intervention is one way for us to address, um, additional, um, math instruction, but there are other ways as well. And we're rolling, uh, we've rolled out, uh, new tier-one instructional materials for math, uh, really from pre-K through grade five, as well as at Milton High School this year. Um, and we want to be sure not to neglect or overlook the significant importance and impact of high-quality instruction alongside high-quality, uh, instructional materials. And the, uh, as my colleague, uh, Sue said, as it pertained to co-taught inclusion settings, the same is very much true. We can't do more impact on student learning than to be sure that we have, uh, the best possible tier-one instruction happening in our classrooms. So, uh, the intervention model is definitely one that is needed, that I'm very happy to, uh, hear is getting the attention that it is tonight and has been getting. Um, and we, we absolutely need to continue to look at, uh, whether we are able to meet the needs by, based on the staffing we have in that area. But it's not the only way that we can impact positively the, uh, learning that's happening in our math classrooms, uh, either across the district or in our elementary schools.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep my remarks short. My name's Ben Zoll. I'm a Milton dad and, uh, I've got four kids. We live on, uh, 1651 Canton Ave. Uh, we've got four kids. You guys have 4,000 kids. And we spend a lot of time just trying to figure out the needs of our four kids. So I just want to start by saying thank you all so much, uh, the school committee and our educators for what you do for our kids. Uh, I'm here today to support, uh, the budget that's been put forward. And I just want to say specifically, uh, call out, um, and it's been said earlier, so I don't want to belabor the point, but the effects of COVID on the kids, uh, as they are now. I'm so delighted to see the emphasis on the social and emotional learning, on the, um, on the special education front, on the diversity, equity and inclusion work. We know that COVID impacted everyone and we know that it impacted everyone differently. And I think it's, uh, really remarkable how much thought has gone into this process. Um, and I think to, my, if I have to ask a question, which I, I feel like you do when you come to the microphone, to, to sort of echo an earlier point, I wouldn't mind seeing two versions of this budget. One where we see even more needs that the schools have. Um, I totally appreciate the need to kind of whittle things down. And I also appreciate your efforts to try to make things more palatable for the Milton taxpayers. But I would really love to see, um, kind of a wish list a bit more, uh, from the educators. I think that would be, uh, really, um, I think informative to see what we really could have if we had those extra dollars for our students. Do we need a broader tax base to support this? We absolutely do. Um, it's, it's, uh, but we cannot mortgage our kids' futures. This, they are the most important asset that we have as a town and, and we are so grateful to have you all, uh, in the positions that you're in and advocating for our kids the way that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I, I just want to respond to the last two speakers, including yourself, that, you know, typically in Milton, we do need, I mean, I think we, you know, I, as a school committee member, I can say, I don't think we're asking for enough. But the reality of our tax base is what we are dealing with. This town typically needs to have an operating override. And typically in the past, you know, the financial people will say to you, the administrators will say, every three to four years, Milton needs an operating override. We haven't had one in six years. Probably because we had the federal funding through ARPA and the other funds that we got from Norfolk County to help us get through the last couple of years. If we hadn't have them, we would have needed an override. You know, there is some discussion, um, you know, we presented what we called our needs-based budget. And, um, we did whittle it down. If we went back to the drawing board, we could tell you, you know, that we need these many more positions. We would add them to the total. However, you know, um, the other town departments brought an operate, they just had a regular, they just brought their needs-based budget just recently to the town administrator. And they came up with wanting some positions. The library asked for some positions, police, the fire, um, DPW, uh, the health department. I'm probably missing some others that did. So, right, if you went, listened to the warrant committee last night, the town administrator said that if we looked at everyone's need-based budget, we are in, right now, $6 million short of what we would need for everything, all departments. So again, that's a huge number. But again, I, I think that sometimes when we are planning for an override, if we do go ahead with an operating override, we do have to think about, how can we make this amount last us for a while so we don't get right back into, uh, difficulty the following year? So, but we don't make that decision of the override. The override has to be discussed, um, by the select board and they have to put it on the ballot and the town meeting has to discuss it and vote on it. And so then after they do that, you will see on a town meeting, uh, warrant, you'll see what they call a contingent budget and a non-contingent budget. And the contingent budget would be all the requests that the town is making if we were to pass operating override. So in fact, there are two separate budgets in those kind of warrants that you, you would see if you were a town meeting member, um, to voting. Just, yeah. Uh, one that, if the override fails, then this is what the, this is what the budget's going to look like. But if the override passes, then we will be able to add these additional positions into the departments across the town.
But just to add to what Betty shared with you, it goes back to what kind of town do we want to be? You know, we're presenting a, a, a narrowed needs-based budget. But I would love to have the discussion, if we were going to say, if, where is Milton going to be in five years? And then talk about money. I think we'd have a much better town than we see today. But it's having the courage as a community to say, that's the discussion that needs to be had and having the patience to see it through.
Hello, I'm Regina Campbell Malone. Uh, I live at 1176 Truro Lane. And like the previous speaker, I do want to, um, thank you all, um, for your hard work and dedication to, uh, the children of this town. I also want to congratulate the children of this town who take an interest in and are keeping our Chromebooks afloat. I had no idea that was going on. Um, so thank you for, for the cost savings there and for increasing your skills. I, and like the previous speaker, I too would like to see another sort of run at the budget in terms of, what would we legally be required to spend by sending students out of district that we can't serve here? What are the additional costs of not approving this budget, right? And, and I think, I think that would be in stark contrast and would cost far more than what the asks are here. And I think the, the last thing I'd like to say before asking a question is that the math interventionists and the data that, um, that have been presented, um, by Karen McDavitt, I think, and Brian Salig, have shown the tremendous increase, uh, in, in learning in math based on having the two interventionists that we have now. The, the idea that we could have a third and see even more increases, um, just warms my heart. And I think should speak to all of those who are in this with an eye on excellence for all, right? This is a, a position that will directly impact the math scores, um, that we are evaluating our kids based on. And so, uh, and the same thing with the, um, the sped classroom as well. Improving, uh, the lives and education of these children directly and in measurable ways is, is the goal. And so excellence for all is what you, you speak to. I think this budget addresses those, those concerns, uses quantitative metrics, um, and formative assessments to prove that it addresses those. Um, and, uh, I, I think you, you can't have everything, but this, this gives us a, a great shot at getting what our children need. So thank you for putting that together. And my, my only question, um, would be, you know, if, if there was one more thing that you could have or that you could offer for our kids in this budget, what might that be? Like what was on the chopping block? I'm just curious. Yeah, you get one, you get one.
Can we each take?
Yes, please, dream big. Thank you.
Well, after, after having gone through this, uh, whittling down process, where we are, it's hard to, to pick something that didn't make the list. I think there, there's plenty and not just one that I think we would all include. But I, but I would like to comment on, on your, um, comments about, uh, the data that we're using. And, and I think that that is something that we're all very proud of, that has really grown in the last couple of years and, and really being able to follow the data very closely on how our students are doing. And so those charts like you saw tonight, it really demonstrate the progress, um, is, is just so reinforcing. And, and earlier this year, we had, uh, results for the, um, formative assessments, sort of in the first half of the year that really showed growth. And it was, it was just really very encouraging and it, it helps our And it was, it was just really very encouraging and it helps our staff, you know, know what they need to do, what they need to work on for students and, and really addresses the, the range of needs that we're seeing every day. So I think that's something that we're, we're all very proud of.
Regina, I would vote for a new building. And been watching all that and data and meeting and we need a new building now. Unfortunately, we can't get it now, but we need to get moving quickly so we can get it as soon as possible, so.
And their district-wide needs, each individual school has something very unique to its setting that I could lobby for each one of them. So if I said any one of them, it would look really bad, but in all, in all honesty, I think to Ms. Harrington's point, there really is probably at least $3 million worth of stuff that I could rattle off in about 15 minutes. Is it appropriate for right now? Probably not, but there's always next year. We'll see what we get on the list.
My name is Paul Warren. I'm a precinct day to town meeting member and our kids and our grandkids have gone through the Milton schools, Tucker, the high school, Curry, et cetera. But before I start, I'm cutting it short because some of my questions were answered. Glenn, I want to thank you and you, Betty, for the work that you've done to put this together. I'd like to help you get what you want, but I'm going to give you some feedback as to what I've been getting from the man out in the street, the lady out in the street, okay? As far as the school department and the police department, do the police assist you or do they ignore you? Just a general statement.
We have two school resource officers.
Okay.
Who work with us day to day. One is on the police payroll, one we actually reimburse them for. We have a very good working relationship with the Milton Police. One of our resource officers, in fact, not too, not too long ago, a graduate of Milton High School. And so they have a, a good relationship with the students there. And we've, you know, you hear a lot about school resource officers in different situations. I have to say, our, our experience has been good. They're down in the cafeteria, sitting with them at lunchtime. We find out things are going to happen generally before they do.
Good. And as far as racial problems in the Milton school system, do they exist? Do we have problems like, I was a product of the Boston schools. You know, you had a duck and bob and weave, et cetera. Do we have that?
Yes, we actually presented it.
We do have that?
At the last forum. And then we also were cited by, by DESI, which is what Susan Nocelli shared. So we're being flagged by our own students and the state for our challenges around race.
Okay. Now, I know there was, and I'm just again talking generalities from what I'm hearing out in the street. There was some kind of an issue that was instigated in the schools earlier in, before the school season ended last year. Is that correct? Has there been any more of that? The parents ought to be concerned about safety in the schools.
I don't know what the incident is.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine. Maybe it was.
Oh, but that's race? That's, no.
It wasn't.
Were you talking about what happened at Pierce with the bullets?
Yes, I am.
I didn't know that was a race issue, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, good. So it really wasn't that much if it's not a, a big matter of interest here.
What, what do you mean? I mean, it wasn't, it was, it was a concerning incident, so I don't want to take away from that. It's just more of, I think, though, we're saying it wasn't a race racially based incident.
Well, getting back to what I had said about the police, was there any prosecution pursued by the school department of any of the parties involved? Did the police refuse to pursue it if it was the situation?
I wasn't here last spring, so I'm not going to say one thing. I will say the prosecution is determined by, by the district attorney. It's not determined by the police or the school department. They may make an arrest, but prosecution is.
Okay, in other words.
Above ours. I, we, we, when something happens, we refer our school resource officers to look into it. And that's pretty much the end of our exposure there.
Mr. Vaughn, I think maybe if you spoke to Chief King, he could answer that.
Oh, I question about what the process is, you know? But it's, it's, it's the chief, you know, I get along with the police as everybody does. We have an outstanding police department. But what we want to confirm for the people out here that are paying the taxes is that we don't have those kind of problems in the Milton school system. So as a general statement, we do not have problems like that. Is that correct?
What are you defining by problems?
But we do. Racial problems, we do. So there was data that was presented last, just two weeks ago, that showed us in terms of our young, our students and how they are feeling and how they are experiencing, right? So in terms of our, our students of color, right, they said they are feeling, they're not all feeling a sense of belonging in the schools or safe in the schools. So we do have issues in our schools that we need to address. Now, they don't necessarily, you know, you're making sort of this correlation between sort of incident of safety that occurred at Pierce with a race-based incident. So I would like to separate those two because, you know, they're not one in the same.
Well, see, the thing is that the parents out here that don't know about these incidents and the taxpayers that don't know about these incidents are wondering, is there, is there a real concern?
There is a real concern.
Well, there's a concern of the people that are here and the people that are pushing for a certain agenda, but overall, the town doesn't feel that way.
So say more about that. I would love to have you say more about what you mean by that.
The town very much feels safe living in this community.
Okay, and who, who is, who constitutes the town?
The people that live in it.
Yeah, right, correct, correct. But who are you talking about, right? Because you're, you're saying just general, generalities here, but really, who are we talking about?
We're talking about people that live in the town. They continue to live here and other people continue to want to get into this town if they can afford it for what the town has to offer.
So if I sort of push a little bit more and think about the data that we saw two weeks ago, right? And the students that were surveyed, they are town residents and they are saying that they are not feeling safe, a sense of belonging, 25%. So it was, I don't have the N in front of me unfortunately, right in this moment, and I don't want to misquote, but I just want to say, right, if we have 25%, that means one in four.
Yeah, but that's, we have 11.7% of Brian Blackett. So that also, yes, yes, it was, and in high school.
Excuse me, we can't have, we can't have speaking from the back of the room because people who are watching can't hear you.
Let me, let me finish my time, okay? We've got 4,000-plus students in this, in the school system. Are you telling us that 25% of our students feel bullied, intimidated because of, because they wear glasses or they're black or they're brown or they're Orient, whatever? Is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, the data says. Excuse me, excuse me.
No, no, I, no, I didn't say that. You are telling us that 25% of our 4,000-plus student body are feeling intimidated and concerned because they wear glasses, they're black, they're brown.
Excuse me, Mr. Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn?
Excuse me.
Wait for your turn. Wait for your turn.
Mr. Vaughn?
Mr. Vaughn has the floor.
Wait for your turn. Thank you, Dr. Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, in response to your question.
Mr. Vaughn has the floor. Thank you, Dr. Now, getting back to what I asked.
It wasn't 4,000 students. The data was reported at the high school level. 25% of students said they felt bullied because of their race and 19% of LDGQT-plus students said they felt bullied because of.
Excuse me, do we have to have a police officer come down here and remove you to the rat of water? Give me an opportunity to have my say and then you can say, okay? Thank you. I've lived in this town for 55 years. I deserve a little respect. I'm 82 years of age, I'm a grandfather, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm, I'm shocked at what's going on in the school department. Absolutely shocked beyond, I'm trying to keep my thoughts respectful.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Now, we have, Dr., you answered one of the questions, one of mine anyway. Technology, there's a 65,000-plus amount that has looked for technology. Fine, but then you got $167,000 for an equity program. Come on. Why? Really, why? Is there any amount of dollars appropriated for the kids to come out of two-parent homes that do things a certain way that has proven to be successful? No, everybody's bobbing and weaving, ducking. It's wrong what the school system is doing. It's wrong with this equity. Young lady, you made a comment that we'll see in five years that things change. Do you want to change the whole structure of the town where we start bringing in industry to make up what the taxpayer is going to be paying? Who makes up this town? You've got a lot of elderly out here that are going to the food pantry and we're talking about, you know, come on, it's not right. It really isn't. But again, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
So we had a woman in the, I think, what's her name? Well, she'd like to speak because we have about six minutes left. So one, give me someone to speak. So two, is that, is that it? So you stop harassing me. So you have, I'm sorry, but I'd like to make a complaint because it's really hard to have participants in the meeting with someone asking.
Yeah, she was like, I'm not a speaker.
You're next. We only have five or six minutes left.
Please, if you could call the cops, that'd be great.
Yeah, please call them. Go for it.
You'll be next.
Oh, my gosh.
Hi, committee and district leaders. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. My name is Luis Alliance and our family has two kids in the elementary school and one in the high school. We are Latinx identifying people of color, very similar to what the previous speaker spoke of, so I can, you know, share my experience. My husband and I have both been teachers before, both here and internationally, and we come from a family of educators. What we have here is pretty amazing, let me just tell you. Our family is so grateful for all of the hard work that you do in the district. My kids don't currently use special ed programs yet, but we're very supportive of using dollars to support special ed kids. Thank you for prioritizing those needs. We hope that all kids thrive. We have no kids in the middle school, yet we're elated that a lot of the budget ask is going for Pierce. We're very happy with our elementary experience. Mrs. McDavid has been amazing, as has the rest of her team. We constantly have chances to be in the classroom. We constantly have chances to speak with our principal. She replies right away and the teachers do as well. So we have access and a lot of information coming at us every single week, so I appreciate that. Some kids say, some people say, like many in the room, that kids will leave, but clearly the data you have shared shows the opposite of that. I commend you in the district for garnering the resources and the grants for SEL, for personalized learning. That is very, very impressive and appreciated. You're beyond bright and very experienced and the fact that you were elected tells me that many or the majority of the families in town support your work. Our family and many other families, unlike what you hear in these meetings sometimes, trust your work and we're grateful that you and the committee have taken on these unpaid roles in service of our children. We're grateful for the DEI, SEL, ELA and special need investments made. We reviewed the budget at home today and the DEI ask was .22% of the extra money asked for, to .22, not even 1%. I feel like that is beyond appropriate. As taxpayers, homeowners, our family continues to support the budget you have laid out and we're happy to make this contribution, not just for our kids, but for all the kids in town. So thank you for all of the work you do and it's just beyond me that you take on so much harassment all the time. And just so you know, although it is often said by a lot of people in this room here that they speak for the whole community, it is just simply not true. So the numbers don't show that. Thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you.
I think this could be our last speaker.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Farone, 71 Central Avenue, and my son, who's now older, he was graduate of the Glover School. He was also a student, a child that was adopted from India. My husband's Indian and I do have to say that back then, he did experience bullying because of skin color and I'm very well aware of the amount of issues that, that go on in the schools, students feeling unsafe. My background is education. I was an administrator in Boston for 33 years, dealing with students of color, special education. And I currently work for Curry College. I've worked in the Milton schools, observing student teachers, as well as Needham, Canton, surrounding areas. So I wanted to say a couple of things. I was really surprised to hear how low our funding is for a town of what Milton considers itself and I think it's super short-sighted when people are buying homes, they're looking at the figures, their real estate values. So I think if people are objecting to paying taxes, they're going to lose out when people are choosing communities that fully fund education. I also wanted to say that one of the things that I think people who aren't in the schools or people who are looking at things, when we're talking about money for the different things like SEL, equity, it's not, it's not separated. If you have students coming into school that don't feel safe, no amount of instructional coaching or technology is going to help them achieve if they are in the classroom worried that something is going to hit them from behind or someone's going to call them a name. So by putting in the initiatives, you know, so many of us through the pandemic, people were saying, get the kids back in school for their mental health. There, there definitely was that disconnect when they were out. So we, we really need to even more focus on some of those initiatives that we're hearing about so that all the students feel welcomed, included, a sense of belonging and safety so that they can then focus on the academics in front of them. And we're not talking about the money goes to one group or one skin color. It's everyone. If you have initiatives in the school that focus on belonging, that focus on safety, there's kids of all races that may feel awkward and feel unincluded. It, it's, you know, people I think have put it in such divisive compartments, so all these initiatives that we're talking about will all lead to academic achievement. It's not a separate funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Well, that concludes our, our forum this evening. Thank you all so much for coming out and stay tuned as this, our budget makes its way towards town meeting and we appreciate your comments and your support. Thank you all. Have a, have a good evening. Thank you all for joining us online. Bye-bye.